This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and I'm calling this special Town Council meeting to order. It is currently 7:04 on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Ms. Wakefield, who is absent with notification. Up next on the agenda is interviews of Boards and Commission applicants. Three A, David Griffiths is here to interview for the Northeast District Department of Health. Thank you.
How about that one? We went from 12 personnel to 27 in order to meet the needs and what the state required of us. That's caused some growing pains, of course. Restructuring, people working from home, telecommuting. There wasn't really room enough to keep everyone there at the same time. So, we've gone through a lot of challenges. But I think the most rewarding part is how the staff has stepped up, has put in extra time and effort. And the volunteers, we couldn't run a lot of the clinics that we've run without so many of the volunteers stepping forward. And it was remarkable, to say the least. And last year, we put a small presentation on and given them a small token for their involvement, so they'd remember that they came forward when we needed them the most. We didn't think it was right to use taxpayers' monies to give them the small certificates and the small pieces of coin that we gave them that indicated that they had volunteered. So, the Board members, many of the Board members stepped up and we took money out of our own pockets to pay for it. So, that's what's been going on. We've been working over a year on the new personnel agenda of protocol. We looked over the requirements and the, how ours compared to other health departments and tried to refine and get a good handle on making sure our personnel file was up to date. We've instituted a lot of new things. One of the things that we've trying to get off the ground is that we want all the appointees from the various towns, the 12 towns that make up the District Department of Health, to see if there were any glitches or any problems in their towns, so that we can address it. If we're going to have the best Department of Health, we need to have some feedback and good communication. So, that's on the agenda. The Board only meets quarterly. So, if something else comes up in the meantime, there's no problem contacting your layers on that you've appointed to see if that can be worked out. So, we've done a lot of things. We, to get the Board more involved, we're doing training sessions online, not only with the staff, but with the full Board, so they know what's going on. We also have, every Friday, we have staff meetings. The staff meetings are now televised, so the Board can be up to speed as to what the staff is doing. Not that we get involved, but we need to know what is happening if we're going to be able to take care of addressing any policy issues that we need to. Anything else you'd like?
I think that pretty much covers it. I mean, I will open up to any council members that have questions or comments.
So, what expertise do you believe that you bring forth to the?
I'm not clear.
What expertise do you believe that you personally bring to the Board?
Well, I have a little knowledge of the town of Killenly. I've certainly served on the council of governments. I've served on many of the Boards and the Commissions in the town. So, and I've been around here a few years, too. And I really enjoy the town of Killenly. I mean, I built my house here. My family was raised here. So, I'm deeply involved and I want, I've always wanted the best for the town of Killenly. And now I want the best for the region. And the only way we can do that is real good communications.
You've been a member of the Department of Health Board over there for how many years now, Dave?
Well, when Tammy was the chairman and I was the vice chairman, I stepped in at that point in time. Now, if you go back 16 years, I was on the Health Department also, and I was on for seven years at that point in time.
I thought you'd been over there for, involved for a long time.
Well, I had a little hiatus in the beginning then.
Nothing wrong with that. On behalf of the council, I'd just like to thank you for your dedication to this town and being willing to volunteer to serve the community. I personally feel it's a great thing when anyone steps up to volunteer and give themselves to help others. If there are no further questions, we will be voting on this next Tuesday at the regular Town Council meeting.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on to the agenda, next item up is citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Clori, did we have any submitted?
The only comment that we received was a comment from the the boys' baseball coach indicating that he was unable, the boys' baseball team was unable to attend tonight, but thanking the council for their recognition and that public comment will be put up on the website tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if anyone would like to come up to the podium and make any public comment, state your name and address. We just ask that you keep any public comments related to the items that are on tonight's agenda. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Item five, old business, we have none. We'll move on to item six, new business. Six A, presentation of student achievements. First up, we want to recognize the Killenly High School yearbook staff for their achievements in winning the Jostine Program of Excellence Bronze Award. Next up is the wrestling team. Killenly Town Council congratulates the 2022 Killenly High School wrestling team for their achievements, winning 2022 ECC Divisional Tournament Championship. Next up is the robotics team. The Killenly Town Council congratulates the 2022 robotics team for their achievements, winning the 2022 Southern New England Regional Championship and World Robotics Championship in Engineering Design.
Guys all standard attention.
We did the, we did the very serious one. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the golf team. Killenly Town Council congratulates the 2022 golf team for their achievements, winning the 2022 ECC Divisional Championship. Unfortunately, they were unable to attend tonight. Next up, the Killenly Town Council congratulates the 2022 FFA Star Awards for exemplary efforts and high achievements. And I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's names. Noah Reinhardt, FFA Greenhand, Shelby Bellows, Chapter Star Farmer, William Carver, Agribusiness, Georgia Berry, Star and Chapter Placement, and Rhiannon Martin, Outstanding Senior. And next, the Killenly Town Council congratulates the 2022 baseball team for their achievements, winning the ECC Divisional Championship. Unfortunately, they were unable to attend tonight as well. I would like to personally congratulate all of you. I know just doing your schoolwork and getting through the school year is difficult enough, but to take on all the extracurricular activities takes a lot of dedication and it definitely speaks a lot to each and every one of you's character and perseverance to receive and accomplish everything that you have. And I just want to congratulate you all.
If I may really quickly, Chairman, for all of you, congratulations on your, on those recognitions. If any of you are, don't think that you're going to be able to see your coach or your coach isn't here, the plaque should eventually get to the school to be able to hung up, be hung up in the school. So, forever, everybody walking up and down the halls will be able to see your names on there and recognize your achievement. If for whatever reason you don't think that you're going to be able to get it to your coach or your advisor, just let me know. I can make sure I get that transmitted over for you as well. So, just, I think everybody has at least somebody here that was an advisor that could take the plaque back to the school. You can take them, okay?
I can take any plaques that don't have.
And I will open up to any other council members that want to make any comments.
I would just like to say it's a great achievement for, like Jason was saying, that all your regular schoolwork and the extra time that you put in to do these extra projects. And it's very nice, you should be commended on that.
Seeing no further comments, thank you all for coming. And we want to wish you all well and your endeavors from here. At this time in the agenda, we will move on. The next item up is six B, Plan of Conservation and Development Presentation by Anne Marie Augury, Planning Director, and Jonathan Blain, Planner.
While they're pulling it up and they're starting to come to the front, this is in, kind of in response to the conversation that you had during your goal-setting session, where you talked about developing potentially a vision committee. But the first step is to really, as Ms. George had brought up, to evaluate where we are with P O C D. So, the intent of this presentation is to give some background on the P O C D for those that may be not as familiar with the process of the P O C D, what it is, how it's developed, the collaboration that goes into that process. And then the action, some of the action items that are addressed in the P O C D and those that may be, you know, specifically called out for the Town Council, whether it's the council-supporting action items or development or actual, you know, ordinance or things like that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Anne Marie and Jonathan. They were really the core staff that worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission in the current update, the current plan that's currently, that was just approved back in 2020. And so, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? All right, we can start with the next slide, please, Jen? Okay. First, one of the first questions that always comes up is why, why do we do it? And why is it the, why is it the Planning and Zoning Commission that does the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is, which is basically your 10-year vision for the town? Quite simply put, it's under state statute. Next, next slide, please. Okay. Basically, it, the state statute reads that the Planning Commission, but we have a combined Planning, Zoning Commission, shall prepare or amend and shall adopt a plan of conservation and development for the municipality. And it also goes on to say that we do have the capability of amending a plan as we go along. They want to make us aware that the plan is a living document. The town changes, the plan changes, whatnot. But under Yukon Clear, the Land Use Academy, they make it, they recommend that it is the commission's duty for, to show the most desirable use of the land and the most desirable density of the population in the various parts. Okay? At a minimum, we need to review this plan at least once every 10 years. Okay? So, that's at a minimum. We've just completed that process. Next slide, please. Next slide. The biggest part of the Plan of Conservation and Development is our community outreach, because we need to get the public's input. It's not my vision, it's not your vision, it is the town's vision. So, it is the public, and it's very important to get the public input. We did this by a number of ways. We had joint meetings with other Boards and Commissions. That process, that part of the process alone took over a year and a half, because we invited them into the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. We did the actually first online survey for the town, for the community. We spread it out on the town's website. We shared it with other websites that other Boards and Commissions had. And we also had paper copies available to the public for those who wanted to do that. We got over 187 responses. So, that, we were really thrilled to do that. But we, we had that up for about 10 months, because we wanted to get all sorts of people. The Boards and Commissions were very good about talking about it at their meetings. Okay? And then we held, held a public charrette or a public workshop on Saturday, January 12th. And actually, I have some we were looking through today and you could, we can still find some photos and pictures, and he'll just pass them around, of the charrette. We had somewhere between 60 to 70 participants. Now, they gave up a Saturday morning to come to the high school cafeteria. We advertised to make sure that people got, got word of it. We advertised in the Turnpike Prior, that Turnpike Highway Shopper's Guide that goes to every house.
So, Anne Marie, if I can, when you talk about the charrette, that wasn't just a presentation, that was them interacting and answering questions and?
Absolutely.
What did that look like for, so when you say that, you know, you had 60 to seven people participating? You know, we see people come to public hearings and public meetings and they may participate, but their participation is sitting in the audience and watching. What does it look like to be at one of these charrettes?
It was very active participation. As you can see, we had a large group. Then what we did at various points in times, we had, you may see them in one of the back of one of those pictures, we had big, large paper with titles on it. And as the group was telling us, like, what is your concerns with economic development? What is your concerns with housing? What is your concerns with public transportation? We would write them down on the board or on the pieces of paper. Those pieces of paper went up on the walls. Then what we did is we gave everybody little dots. And we said, for this one, we gave them, there's nine sections, so there was nine pieces of paper. We said, you get, you have nine red dots, nine green, nine yellow. Let us know, now, red is your top priority, secondary and third. So, what we did from that, and it's in the back of the, at back of the P O C D, how many people thought this was the most important to them? How many people thought this was the most important? We also had people, we broke down into those different groups afterwards as well. And we said, how, who wants to talk about transportation? You go over to that table. Who wants to talk to public services? You go over that table. Land conservation, you go over to that table. And then they had a discussion that was led by staff and by the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Each one of us was assigned to a table. And we got them to discuss, why would you think that this is the most important? What do you think, how do you think we could accomplish this? So, this was really a community effort. And it was, as I said, they gave us a whole morning of their Saturdays. So, and even though I think we got a storm the day before and the day after, but the day of was great. So, you know, and what, to make it so it wasn't, anybody can say that the Planning and Zoning led it this way, or, you know, the director landed this way. We had Advanced C T come in and actually run the charrette, like they had their guide person, the auctioneer, so to say. He was up front. And we had a microphone and we went around and people had questions. We were giving them the microphone to ask questions. And either a Planning and Zoning Commission member or a staff member responded to those questions. So, it was very much interactive, you know? And we were quite pleased to get 60 to 70 people. I used to live in a town that was just about the same size as Killenly and they only got like 35 people when they had their P O C D. So, it's very, it's difficult to get the public interaction, but I think we did a really good job. You know, we got 187 responses on the, excuse me, on the survey. And then, you know, just to let people know that it was, it was very active, it was all day long. Does that answer the question?
That was helpful in understanding kind of what the depth was and what the interaction was. Because sometimes we have those public meetings and while we have a lot of people in the audience, they're just watching a presentation. They're not actually, this was a very?
Everybody there participated.
Right, they had to give input.
They had to give input. Also, when we had, when we invited Board members and Commission members to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, for approximately the year, year and a half, they felt if they could, they would do it an hour before their meeting. Or if they felt that something was coming up and they really needed to discuss it, they would do a special meeting. So, it was a lot of extra effort on the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. So, we did a lot of work. We, we brought in all the Boards and Commissions. We brought in all the department heads, because department heads work with a lot of the Boards and Commissions. And we brought in anybody that we felt we needed input from. We invited them to come into one of our meetings. Next slide, please.
I was there and I want to say that people got involved. You made it work well. They weren't afraid to express themselves or whatnot. Different than here, different than going up to the microphone. There was no embarrassment, that's a tough place to go, to the microphone. Everybody felt comfortable. I thought it was, it was a real good presentation, energized. So, just want to throw that out.
Thank you. Very greatly appreciated. And then again, of course, we did staff research. And again, I brought my pile of research here, which is really that. And part of this is that we wanted to make sure that we covered all the bases, because there were legal requirements. Did we cover everything that the state required us to do? Because we knew that was going to be the second or third or fourth set of eyes that was going to look at the plan. Did we follow all the timeframes? Did we have the right information down that they wanted? Did we get the right approvals? Do we went through Planning and Zoning? We went through, you know, the Town Council at the time that was sitting. And then we looked back and we sat back and we had people in our office or even people in other offices in Town Hall saying, can you read this? Does this make sense to you? Is it cohesive? You know, because after you see something for so long, you know, we've been working on it for a year, year and a half, you're just like, oh yeah, uh huh, that's everything. So, we brought it out to people and asked them, you know, because we wanted to make sure it was user-friendly. And we also had to verify, were there items from the previous plan that were still viable in the current plan? Because if you notice, when you read through the current plan, you even see when we say timeframe, there's some that's ongoing, which means you're never going to stop. This is going to go on continuously. Next frame. Next slide, please. And then again, the proofing, the editing and the more proofing. And pretty much on the right-hand side, that's pretty much what it looked like to you after a year and a half. You know, again, did the final document accurately reflect what we received from the public? It wasn't our plan, it was the public's plan. Did the final document actually make sense for where, you know, the town of Killenly? Was it user-friendly? And of course, were there any typos? So. Next slide, please. Now we're getting into the, somewhat of the nitty-gritty. And that's pretty, the goals, policies, action items, timeframes, and the responsible party. The goals are the what? You know, it's the top of the mountain. Where do you want to go? Where do you want to be? Where do you want to see us in 10 years? The policies were the why. Why do we want to do it? What was our thought process to reach that goal? The action items are your how. What must be done? And the steps that are going to be taken to follow those policies? Because you can say, I want to reach this goal and I'm going to do it this way, but it may not follow with the policy that you've set. So, we had to make sure all of that, all that related. And then you had the timeframes, the when. How long does that particular action item going to take? Because we had to give us, nobody works well unless you have a deadline. I'm sorry, it just doesn't work that way. So, we had short-term items, one to three years, medium, four to six, long-term items, seven to 10, and then we had the ongoing, the never-ending. And people are like, really? And I'm like, yeah, there are times that you have to do ongoing, you never end. And then the responsible party is the who. Who's going to do the action? Who's responsible for this action? And do they have the capability of doing the reaction? So, it basically comes down to, and I remember I took a writing course and they always said, who, what, where, when, why, and how. And that's pretty much what we followed for the goals, policies, and the action items. Next frame, please. Next slide. And then finally, after the year and a half, we presented the final version to the Town Council on November 12th, 2019. They were happy. The P and Z approved the P O C, because we have to have input. We have to have input from the Town Council, we had to have input from N E C O G. Town Council gave us some input at their meeting. N E C O G didn't, we really didn't hear anything from N E C O G. So, Planning and Zoning started their hearings in February. And that's the one thing, with this being a municipal project, there's no timeframes the municipality has to follow, except to get it in on time. So, it says, we approved it on April 20th, but we started the public hearings in February. So, we even had February, March, and then on April. Then the P O C D became effective on May 4th. And the P O C D was emailed to the State Office of Policy and Management on May 28th. So, that's all that we have with the P O C D. So, that was the final steps.
And all of you should have a copy of the P O C D. If you don't have a copy, please let me know and I'll make another, another round and get it in a binder for you. It's a really thick document, it's a pain to try and print out. So, gladly, we'll share it with everyone, see, she's got her binder of P O C D.
There's the document right there. It's a little bit bigger than Affordable Housing Plan.
Right. So, in each section, at the end of every section, it goes over the list of action items and what, you know, who would potentially be taking those actions under each of the categories. So, I don't know if you, do you have any of those?
I have, I've gone through, because there's, the state required us to go through elements, certain elements. And basically, it was cultural historical resources. And I've reread through that. And basically, over- And basically, overall, the duty of the town council is to support those who have to do the projects to go through. Econom- like economics, support of economic development, that sort of thing. Then they had the education. Now, the education portion of it, I know our own school is required to put in a five-year plan. So what I did is I got a copy of the five-year plan, I made reference to it, and I put it in the back of the book. There, we did put some things in that some people might like to see, but we pretty much referred to what the school was doing. Because I even, I even sat in on, when they were going through their five-year process, I sat on a few of their meetings to go through. Then housing, we had a housing section. That has now been expanded into our Affordable Housing Plan, the plan that you've just reported. And as I said with that one, staff, on all of this really, staff is the boots-on-the-ground people to do this. Okay? What we need from the town councils, we need support from the town council. We need backing, we need you to understand the efforts that we need to go through and the support that we can do. Land use was one of, natural resources. The big ticket item that I saw in there that was revolved around the town council was the acceptance and the approval of conservation easements. So, and before the conservation easements even get to you, they have to go through a, a rather large process under the planning and zoning. And plus, it's a legal document, so legal will be, review those beforehand. We also have our non-transportation infrastructure. This is where your major impact is. And a big thing of that is volunteers. I cannot think of a board right now that, or commission that is fully volunteered. Okay? So, you're our good P R people, you're the ones that can go out in the field and ask us and ask people to be on these boards and commissions. I know we have certain commission members and presidents that do that. And they go out and they drag, you know, they meet people for five minutes and they're handing them an application. Yeah, so, that's...
I'll put a pack in everybody's mailbox.
So, and tha- and that's what it is. That's, that's our big thing, because we need to get the more volunteers in there. Sometimes when staff looks at it, you know, he's not going to go on to a zoning enforcement violation and then ask somebody if they're going to serve on a board. We can't do that. Doesn't work that way. You know, so, those are the things. The other thing of the public services, public services is, is everything in town. The town hall, the volunteer fire departments, you know, that sort of thing, the constables. And then we have our transportation, which I believe you've done a wonderful job with allowing our D P W enough financing to do what they need to do this year. So, that, that's the kind of support that we need. It's the support for the staff, it's the support for your volunteers, it's your commission members. So, did I leave anything else?
So, only small things, and just to get ahead of, like, a question. Like, what's the payoff, right? Like, you know, a lot of this stuff, I'm sure many people have a vision, they have an idea of what they want to see, particularly town council members, board and commission members. This puts it in one cohesive place. This also puts it in a place that opens us up to discretionary state funding. So there's certain state funding resources that if we did not renew this plan, we would automatically be disqualified for. Those are historical, brownfield, open space. There's other funding that aren't, isn't excluded, like Town Road Aid, some of the education support funding. But there's a large swath of grant state funding that we are open to. And we take advantage of. Town staff is constantly applying for and getting those, that funding, which we, you know, as a town resident, we only benefit from i- in the long run. There is a nasty list that you do not want to be at the top of, that if you're in the red...
Bad boy list.
You do not qualify for funding. And there are towns that are, have been out of date since two thousand and seven. There's, two thousand sixteen, the state kind of tightened up the general statute and made it so that way, in the statute, it clearly says, you, you have to do this plan every ten years. It allows you to update it, as Ann Marie said. And that resets your clock if you do update, do some updates. But if you don't do it, that's it. All the effort that you could make in other areas would be for nothing. So, so it's a very important document, you know, to, to really adhere to and look, look at.
So I really asked, you know, so in the goal-setting session, you talked about wanting to get an update on the P O C D and kind of go over that as that initial conversation around vision. And so that really is the vision document that the community developed over that year and a half through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I guess what I'm looking to get from the council is, you know, do you want to take more time to really, you know, on your own? Or if we take a section and go through each section during certain meetings, so that way collectively you can talk about each of those sections? I didn't want to just assume to do that this, this time around. How do you want to better understand that vision before we progress into or decide whether or not you want to move into having another visioning committee? I don't, you know, I'm just trying to get a understanding of where we want to go.
What I'd like to do is, especially the short-term goals that were set. Where are we at with them? I know COVID has thrown a monkey wrench in a lot of things. Just to give us an idea of, and, and even if we look at the medium and long-term goals, as far as how far we expected to be into them by now. At this point, we're two years in, we're, we're a fifth of the way in. Are we making any progress on them? So that way, it, to start off with, at least that way, then we know where we're at, where our baseline is right now compared to when this was approved two years ago. I, I think that's a key piece in, before we go forward with anything, just understanding exactly where we're at. And are there things, would it be worthwhile? May, maybe it comes down to, we explore the possibility of doing a charrette once a year, just to give the public a chance to get an update on, this is where we're at. Because you talked about it being a living document. I know that probably would be a lot of work.
Would you want to do a charrette or a presentation? Like, a charrette would be almost like updating it.
Yeah.
A presentation would be more about, like, this is where we're at in it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That is, and that is something that I would, I would not necessarily object to. But I would say, at least let staff work on the, the way we go about it. We did try to tell them, and while we were doing this, we did give updates on our webpage as we were doing this. So the public would know, like, the public, I didn't want the public to think, okay, we're going to be here for four, five, six hours, and then we're going to go away and nothing ever is going to happen. So, and, and that's why we kept on saying, inviting the public, and we kept on having these public meetings throughout the year. Even after we had the charrette, they went through planning and zoning, and anybody could come. That was, you know, we, we invited the public, they had that special hour, or they had that special meeting as time went through. And even at the charrette, I announced when they were having meetings or timeframes, because we worked with the Planning and Zoning Board. And I said, look, this is one of the things they're going to want to ask, they're going to want to know about, and are we willing to do this? And Planning and Zoning was very willing to do it. So, at the charrette, I gave a whole schedule of that year's meetings for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I said, we would be as it stands right now, but you need to check our website. We will start an hour earlier on every one of our meetings, so we'll go from six to seven. So if any of you felt that you, you know, think of something later on after you left, oh, I should have said that, feel free to send it to us, feel free to send it into the office. And that's been very good. So, I, and I think it also helps with just generally keeping ourselves on track. I know Jill is constantly looking at this. And she's like, oh, Emery, this meets under the P O C D, and then, you know. And it's like, we do, we do that. And it's like, we know we've done things with P O C D, like the, the housing plan and whatever. It's like, yeah, we know, but it probably would not hurt to announce our progress. So.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, like a State of the Union, but the State of the P O C D. Update, you know, where we can just say, you know, these are the goals and progress. I think that's a good, just kind of transparent way of saying, like, you know, this might not be the most, you know, out-there, you know, type, you know, progress we've made on cataloging conservation easements, but, you know, we did, you know. Or the P O C D, or the housing plan was adopted, and, you know, other efforts that are made, you know, every day here. So, I think that would be a nice kind of, like, public hearing, kind of back and forth, where we can receive some comment and some more direction from, you know, our residents. And wouldn't have to take four hours, I don't, you know.
I think like twenty minutes of a town council meeting would be fine.
We talk about a charrette or a public hearing. The charrette was nice, because people were at ease. The public hearing, they're a little afraid of that. I don't, I, just to throw that out.
It's...
Somewhere in between...
We could call it, like a workshop.
Informational meeting, right? And we, if we did it, like, at the library.
Yep.
I think we've had informational meetings at the library, or at a different setting, that have been more relaxed. And I think that that, you know, may, maybe that's the way we go, is we do an informational meeting on the status of the P O C D, and we do it at the library, or we do it in another format like that, where it's not as a formal public hearing or something like that.
Right, we don't want, right.
Right, and then it does feel easier to kind of give that information. It's led by staff, rather than led by a board or a commission specifically, where then we can bring the information back to the respective board or commission and kind of give, you know, give you guys an update on it, give Planning and Zoning an update on it, because they're the ones that actually, you know, update the document. But rather than doing, like, a charrette feels more as though, if we were to go through an entire update of the P O C D, right? If we were going to, five years in, decide we needed to update it, because things have substantially changed. That's where I think you want to do a charrette, where you're taking six hours and everybody's breaking down into these groups and re-identifying everything. That's really like a full update versus an informational meeting that goes over, this is the P O C D, these are the topics, these were the goals, and this is where we're at with each of these goals. I think that's a, very reasonable, and we could look at doing something, like, putting something like that together and maybe doing it in the, you know, maybe in the fall or something every year.
Because that was the thing, the charrette was at the high school, not here. So people showed up to it, it wa-
Well, they also knew there was food.
It was an attitude, it was a different attitude, and like you said...
They must have had cookies.
Engage right away, then all of a sudden, oh, they would go see something, what about this?
Yep.
There was intermingling that I didn't see happening in a long time.
Yeah.
It was very, very good, so. Maybe, like I said, not, maybe not call it a charrette, but some other informational... We've got to get everybody on board, and then, same with that too. You might get people to sign up to be a volunteer on a board of commission, you know. So it's going to be easy.
And we might be able to do like a, like a podcast up at almost, and then, and have it posted, like, on our Facebook page, or, you know, on our town website or something. So that way, if somebody's not able to make it to that exact meeting, they would be able to have at least it in a podcast style. One of the things I would like to do it as a podcast style, as opposed to doing it like in a live event, only because sometimes people, when they know that we're broadcasting live, they don't want to speak. They, it, it hinders some people from that conversation. And so, I think it makes sense to do one as that live, you know, that in-person, and then maybe potentially do something more along a podcast version, where we can just go over, without having necessarily a public interaction piece on that. So people can at least refresh their memory when they go back to it. So maybe we can do both.
Can you, can you do a podcast and actually have somebody answering questions on the side? Like people, you, you talk about people that want to publicly come on there.
So, yeah, we could do like a Facebook Live, and people could post comments on our Facebook Live. And I think we can do that, I think we can do that even on the YouTube channel as well. We can do a YouTube Live, and we can get comments on the YouTube Live, too. So there's ways of doing that as well. Right, sometimes they are a little more comfortable, sometimes you got to make sure it's not a spammer, too. That's... Right, we only post to the YouTube afterwards, but... But yes, we can, we can look at doing something like that. But trying to kind of get it in two different formats, if you will, just to make it easier.
We can always do, you know, people who are willing to come and see it in person, they like, usually we find out, they like to see displays. They like to look at something, or they like to touch something, paper or something. So I would still say, let's do the community one, the community room. But a podcast would be for someone who'd be more like, they're working twelve-hour days, they're doing a commute, they want to listen to, oh, oh yeah, this is something, I'll listen to it while I'm on my commute. And we can do it that way, we can give an abbreviated ver- a version of it. So.
One thing I just wanted to say, when I became a council member, that was one of the most important reference materials I received. And it's helped me over the past two years, because to me, it was like a vision board.
Yep.
When you go through each, oh, sorry. And it's helped me actually make informed decisions when I'm sitting here. And when people ask questions and things, if you look at that, you, you can see what's coming up or where we're heading. And when we did the, you know, our action planning both times, I had that in my head, like, where are we going? So it's a very useful document. And I mean, it helps with grants and stuff, but for community members, too, to know what's coming, what's potential, and then look at those ideas, and then to ballpark other ideas, I think it's a great document.
And that's why it takes so long for them to pull together.
Oh, sorry, Mary. Like, is there a P O C D, like, say, like downstairs, or some, somebody thinks?
We, they can get a P O C D through the Planning and Zoning, a Planning and Development Office. On the P O C D is also on our website.
Oh, okay, so it's avail- people can just go...
It's available to everybody.
Yeah, it's very interesting.
And it's at the library, too.
Yeah.
Yep, we have it at the library.
And the town clerk has a copy, but the town clerk's copy needs to stay in the town clerk's office, it can't go out.
Yeah, so I think a presentation would be fantastic.
Great.
And I think the presentation would help, too, with new residents who have just moved into town, who weren't around when the P O C D was developed. But at least they can sit in and listen to or see some kind of display boards or what do you, whatever you have, and get a feel for and feel like they have some input, too.
Well, and I enjoy the idea of a podcast as well, because that's the, something I listen to first thing in the morning when I'm getting ready for work and on the way to work is a podcast. So, that's, I think that's a great way of also reaching out to people as well. And I just want to, you know, thank you guys for all the effort that you put into it, and your, the staff as well, because, you know, I, I think of a little bit more small scale, of what I just recently did at my previous job there, updating the handbook and things like that. And actually, one of the first things I did was reached out to Mary, because I knew she just got through updating the towns' employee handbook. So I was like, I'm not reinventing the wheel here. But, you know, I, I had to look at various other companies as well, you know, be EMS-specific, and I really tried to get, hone in on that, worked together with the team, and had them look for the typos, and trust me, they found my typos. So, you know, that was, that was the thing. So it's definitely a lot more involved, and even this vision casting. I had a meeting today with one of my operations managers, and I was discussing about something a year out from now. And I'm like, we need to start discussing this now, so that we're there. A year from now, we can accomplish getting this done. So these are the things that, you know, definitely I can have a great appreciation for what you, the Planning and Zoning Commission has done. You know, it's just a lot of work, and definitely appreciated. We'll double the volunteers' pay.
It does. It, it does take, it does take time. And that's the one thing you have to realize. You know, I, I'm always amazed at the town, well, at towns that have bought or have brought people in to do it, and they get it done in like two months. And I'm like, do you know the town? And I'm just like, so, and, again, I'm going to go back to the compliment that Rich Roberts gave us with Affordable Housing Plan. It truly relates to your community, and that's what we tried to do here. The P O C D is supposed to be about the community, so we went out to the community. Oh, I could write a P O C D all day long, but would necessarily be what the community needs or wants. Who knows?
Something I've heard from a couple people about the P O C, the P O C D is, why is it only every ten years? Shouldn't we do it more often, because everything's always changing? And I think by, if, at least if we do the yearly updates, I think that would help with people that have concerns over, why do you wait ten years to do it? And especially if it's a living document, where Planning and Zoning is looking at, oh, well, these were our goals, we haven't reached these, or this has changed in town. And you can present to the public, this is what, this is how we've changed it, and this is why. And, or why you've changed your goals, or taken to, out of, or added to.
In order for the Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission to actually change goals... In order for the Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission to actually change goals or policies, action items, to make an actual change to the, they would have to have another public hearing, and they'd have to go through it for that. So, the public would be aware of it anyways, so that part would be covered. But, it never hurts to keep the public informed of what we're trying to do in action. And, it also helps this from being put on a shelf or being put on the floor and never looked at again. So, that's something, and we're very, you're very fortunate, because your staff in town is not that type of staff. They've been looking for it. They've been looking at it. You know, you have your DPW director, you have your Economic Development Director, you have Planning and Zoning Commission people. We've all been looking at this and going, what's my next, you know. It's like, oh, I have a quiet time right now. What's my next step? So.
Any other comments, questions? Well, I, I would definitely support having updates for the public. And, the podcast is a great idea, as well as having the in-person meeting.
Sure. So, we'll work on getting those pulled together. We'll also look to do maybe another presentation to the town council specifically with regards to short-term, where we are with each, with the goals themselves, just as that follow-up presentation. Maybe we can shoot for probably September in doing that, see if we can pull that all together. And, then we can also let you know when those informational meetings will, will happen as well, because we'll try and, it's typically easier, better to do informational meetings once we get into the fall, because more people are available to go to them, as opposed to running into summer vacations as much as we do. So, I usually try and slate them for after-school, goes back into session. Everybody's refocused back onto what's happening, so.
Yeah, we, when we were actually scheduling our charrette, we were trying to figure out what timeframe would be good. And, when first somebody offered, you know, the January timeframe, I'm like, snow. I'm like, winter, snows. They're like, it's after Christmas. They'll have nothing to do.
And, and it's cold out, so who wants to be outside doing stuff? They'd rather be inside. Yeah. That's the only gamble. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. We appreciate all the information that you've brought. Moving on in the agenda, next item up is the executive session, and we have nothing. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Motion has been made by, I believe it was Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Mr. Wood. Is there a discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.